It is five o'clock and I'm calling Tuesday, April the 18th, 2023. Meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are here. Councilwoman Cobb, okay, she has not called in on Zoom. Okay. Thank you, sir. So we will start with presentation. Madam Secretary.
PR 23006, LTC Nicholas James, 2 A B C T, Fort Hood Introduction.
Thank you, ma'am. Lieutenant Colonel James. Good evening, sir. Counsel, this is, so you can come up. Lieutenant Colonel James, he is a representative of, so you can come right here. Second Armor Brigade Combat Team. And this is our adopted unit for the city of Colleen. So they are deployed and he's the real detachment. And I invited him tonight so the public can meet him and also the council. Florida, sir, the floor is yours.
Mayor Nash King, thank you. And members of the city council, thank you for having me. I am Lieutenant Colonel Nicholas James. I'm the commander of 49 Cav, but I am also the home station mission commander for the Second Armor Brigade Combat Team. And on behalf of Colonel Kirkpatrick, he is the commander of the brigade. I just wanted to come out here, introduce myself, show my face, say hello to everybody and let you know that we are your adopted unit on Fort Hood. Right now, the brigade, or most of the brigade, is deployed to Poland in support of our European allies out there. But I just wanted to strengthen our connection in the time that they're gone, kind of set the stage for our relationship when the brigade comes back. They'll be coming back in the fall at some time. And we really look forward to building a relationship. We're open to any ideas that anybody has to further that. We'd like to spend more time in Colleen, use more of the resources here, hold more of our events in Colleen as well. And then anything else, you know, that we would like to do for each other, we're very open to. But right now, it's really what we think we can do for you. Volunteering opportunities, we would be very interested in. And any events that you want our soldiers to attend, we're all about putting that out to them and having them attend and really showing our face a whole lot more. So thank you very much for your time and we look forward to working with you more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
CP 23007, Michael Fornino, civics, the council and the citizens.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Fornino. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Our rights are guaranteed by the Constitution, not granted by it. Those rights come from our Creator, not the government. You acknowledge God with prayers and invocations prior to meetings, then you deny our rights, which denies God and makes you all too often hypocrites. In a republic, the people are more powerful than any government body or appointed functionary. Constitution limits you, not we, the people. For a generation now, this council acts as if it tilts the other way and seems to think and acts as if you're entitled to advance your own agenda instead of our will. You demonstrated this with last week's council votes. A culture, habit and smug indifference towards us. What our plan or agenda you're executing is too often not from we, the people. Who are you listening to if not us? You ignore and deny our rights as well as your oaths of office. Speech you find uncomfortable and inconvenient, you attempt to silence. First Amendment is absolute. Your little rules and attempts to prevent us from challenging you or holding you to account on the record is illegal and against the oath you swore on a Bible. I was proud, proud to see so many citizens not only turn out last week, but also speak their opinions and concerns to those who allegedly represent them. True to habit, you voted against so many who had expressed a consensus opinion that differed from yours. Again, who exactly do you represent? Then you played a familiar card. You cited a legion of people who had been in contact with you, an unseen majority that dictated your opinion. Enough. We demand that you prove this phantom legion even exists and provide us with the communication. Let's see this majority opinion for ourselves versus those who actually turn up to speak. This is also not the first time you've pulled this stunt. Proof, our rights are being violated. Citizens peacefully protest in public near the animal shelter and police were called. Protesters threatened with arrest for not having a permit to exercise their constitutional rights. Wrong. We don't need permission to exercise our rights. The officer ignored his sworn oath and was just following orders or is not aware of the supreme law of the land. Anka Niagu was denied a petition to address the council regarding a committee that she sits on. Reason? City managers under the delusion that someone who lives in the ETJ is not entitled to petition. First Amendment, read and comprehend it. As for the assistant city manager, she unilaterally is writing ordinances that none of us voted for. She doesn't even reside in Colleen or Bell County, yet she has carte blanche to write policy for things that she doesn't have to live under. You also seem to hang on Julie Oliver's every word regarding law and policy for Colleen, for which you followed, are contrary to state law and will now cost us money in lawsuits. And also, she doesn't live in Colleen or Bell County. Tell us you don't have a smug indifference about your own citizens without telling us. Animal complaints are summarily acted upon with zero presentation of proof, resulting in animals being confiscated and euthanized. Clear violation of the Fourth and Sixth Amendments. Committees are bent and twisted to suit your needs and the city manager rather than the citizens and our concerns. Youth Advisory Committee directed as to what they should be concerned with and are just show ponies to represent the city. Crime Solutions is the biggest joke going right now. From unannounced cancellations on meetings to agenda items that barely address crime to, and again, a former police officer who was fired for corruption sitting as a member of Crime Solutions. You complain that we complain. Present an agenda that reflects our will and the complaints will probably subside. This Barbie dream house idea for a new city hall, we don't need it, you want it. I suspect it's part of a long game so you can have fully furnished offices and staff down the road for yourselves or your successors after spending our money to build it. You'll claim this will justify full-time salaries, spending even more of our money.
Your time is up. Thank you.
May I request 30 seconds?
Counsel?
I just have one paragraph.
Counsel said no.
That figures.
Mr. James Gaffney. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
My name's James Gaffney. And I don't know, if you need everything else, I filled it out. But I guess there's actually four topics and I'll cut to the chase real quick. First, on the hike and bike trails and development all around Marlboro Heights and Simmondsville. I don't know what I'm doing wrong, but you know, I presented a deal to the city a year and a half ago, over $150 million project, you know, along Water Street. Couldn't get an answer. I've been with this, I've been here in Colleen since 1973, so I've been here 50 years. So I've kind of watched like what's going on. And I felt like maybe with this city council, we were going to be able to finally do something to address some of those problems over there at, along, in Simmondsville and especially along Veterans Memorial Boulevard. And I guess I'm going to kind of be broad there because of all the properties that we actually own on Veterans Memorial. Especially like, for instance, it was brought to my attention last week when I was with four of the code enforcement officers, that they had one more project that they were addressing with me. And it's one more project that I've been trying to address the city with, and that's the old boot factory. Some people would know it as Academy Surplus, but it's a 40,000 square foot building right there on Veterans Memorial Boulevard that backs right up to the city park. And we've had leads on trying to put a factory there again and storage and blah, blah, blah. But you know, I can't get anything going.
Sir, I apologize. Which item are you discussing? You have four on here.
I didn't know which ones I should put, or if I only had four minutes while trying to jam all four minutes into one.
Okay.
But it would be that, it would be code enforcement. It would be, I think that's been a little over aggressive, especially and selective. And I know that the head of code enforcement said he wasn't aware of it, so I took about 50 pictures on my way in here today in case anybody wanted to see them. And the 50 were, I tried to just make sure that they were all city properties or and/or properties that were within a four-block area of this building. Then, I guess the next would be, the reason why I hit the hike and bike trails, not to jump around, is that, you know, it took a lot of activists 40 years ago to try and get the first hike and bike trail. We got wells to donate that property. We thought the next stage was going to go into the industrial park where all the call centers were. And the idea behind it was is that a child initially could take his bicycle and ride from park to park to park and be out of harms way. The other big thing was because the call centers require a lot of people of lower income, we thought maybe they could, as alternate transportation, ride their bikes to work. And so it was all a connection. And then we go to the next one, which we've been trying to donate land for years and years and years for the hike and bike trail to go through there, but haven't got any response. So you can ask any questions you want, I don't care.
You can finish, sir.
Well, I'll continue.
You have, yes, you have 30 seconds.
And I guess the big thing like is on the last, not this last comprehensive plan, but we'll go back to the comprehensive plan 11 years ago, we agreed that there would be no more offsets on intersections because it's dangerous and all blah, 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 all the other crap with it. But the big intersection that I've been addressed with text out and I've dressed with the city and we've done it forever is the intersection of 38th Street and Veterans Memorial Boulevard.
So your time is up.
Okay. Circle Drive.
He has a question for you, sir. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, sir, for coming and speaking to us. I just got a couple of questions. You had to put a lot into four minutes, so it's kind of hard to follow exactly all the issues. But what I would like, you say you took pictures, also to correspond with us. You can, if you would, please email us, give us that information so we can.
I have them on my phone, I can.
Yeah, and I don't, and who do you represent exactly? Who's your, yeah, who, what's your name, sir?
My name's James Gaffney.
James Gaffney.
And who I represent, I'll just.
Is, are you representing a business when you're talking about these donating land and whatnot? Because I'm not sure.
We got over 200 and some properties here in Colleen, yeah.
Who's we, sir? That's what I'm thinking.
Who's we, that'd be Lad Incorporated.
Okay.
That'd be Arcade News, that would be Vortical Properties, be Lori Leach Properties.
Yes, sir.
And then there's a few individuals that have me represent them at times.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a good understanding of where you're coming from. But if you email us, that'd be great. We have that information that we can actually digest it a little bit better.
But all I'm checking is make sure that if the council's got a problem with me, you don't want to do business, that's fine. I won't do business with you. But if there's just been some sort of, somebody just dropped a ball and there was a reason why we can't address any of those issues, then tell me now.
Councilmember Boitt.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier in your speech to us.
I don't hear it too good either, but.
Earlier in your speech, you mentioned that there was a development you were working on off Water Street. That was a very large development. I'm not familiar with that one. What type of development was it?
It was a mixed-use project. It was retail, a lake was put in, you know, was, is presented. I have pictures if you want to see what I turned in, but it was one of our, actually the guy that turned it into the city used to be on the director of planning and development here in the clean.
Okay.
Thank you.
But anyway.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. The next person is Gabriel Matav.
Pardon?
Oh, this is the next speaker. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just going to be quick tonight. Let me get my notes here. This evening, I'm going to be speaking on RS 23072, the closed captioning, and RS 23-069. Just want to read a brief statement. In District One, we have a lot of elderly people and unfortunately, a lot of them have disabilities, you know, because they're elderly. So we have to have to get a mechanism, a software in place because these good citizens, solid citizens in the community must have the ability to understand, to know how our government works and what our government is doing. So that would, you know, really aid them. I would ask that the council, you know, move forward and approve that. Then I want to speak on RS 23-069, the fireworks display. The fireworks display should be considered approved and the council should consider it approved so that it shows that our, so it shows our citizens that we are actively coming together and hosting community events. And I move that, you know, I asked the city council to approve that. It would be a great community event for all those there and it shows that our city is vibrant, is actively trying to come together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shirley DeConte. Good evening, you have four minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. And first of all, Madam Mayor, I'd like to address you, if I might. Let's remember back to a recent event, and my host was doing introductions. When she introduced me to you, you did not smile, nor did you offer your hand in acknowledgement. Instead, you turned completely away from me, mumbling something I didn't understand. That really surprised me. I was not expecting that from you. I wonder, was it something I have said in this council that offended you? And you must know, I have been offended quite a few times.
She can say it. Please, continue.
Thank you. Maybe it was the suggestion of requiring proof along with yours and assistant city managers alleged numerous nuisance calls, if they exist. If they exist, the citizens of Colleen have a right to know who's complaining and any action taken should be accompanied with that proof. Maybe there's no proof. Or maybe there are no nuisance calls, only requests from cat haters. This goes back to the feral cats and the colonies.
Okay, ma'am, that is not on the agenda, but you can continue to.
It was spoken of earlier.
Yes, ma'am, but it still has to be on the agenda. You can continue to talk about the civic, the council and the citizen. You can continue to discuss on CP-23-007. The feral cats was last week. Please continue.
You shut me down. I wanted everything to be heard. And since you're not allowing me to say what I want to say, which is my right, I'll tell it to TV station.
Yes, ma'am. But if legal, if legal tell me you, our city attorney say you off subject, then I have to go by what she says. So you still have a minute and 37 seconds if you would like. Well, thank you very much. Ms. Linda Marcy? Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Can I ask you a question just for information before I actually start? Could her talking to you have fallen under the citizens' part today because of the complaints from residents about feral cats? Would it have fallen under that?
Yes, ma'am. I did bring that up, but I was told that anything about feral cats, you're off the agenda.
I got you.
Good question.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to speak regarding items previously introduced by Michael Fornino. The residents of Colleen need to have the events shown below as explained regarding cause, effect and solution decisions pertaining to the following. Number one, 10 to 12 nonviolent people peacefully walking and protesting, causing no problems whatsoever, not blocking traffic, they were law-abiding and non-aggressive. And then someone somewhere called the police. Police cars came from two different directions. Police ordered the protesters to cease and desist their protest and threaten them with being arrested if they did not follow police orders. Police did not have the legal authority to arrest the protesters. Does the phrase "freedom to assemble" sound familiar? Number two, recently, the police chief addressed this Colleen city council regarding police officers and their authority to arrest criminal perpetrators possessing marijuana. He stated that his police officers do not have to abide by the law and issue citations. It seems that the officers have the authority to decide whether people possessing illegal marijuana should be arrested. Officers have the right to ignore the laws regarding marijuana possession. Police do need to arrest criminal perpetrators according to the laws of Colleen. Number three, the incident involving a dog named Bruce, who was euthanized at the Colleen shelter for supposedly being a nuisance. The fact that animal services and/or the animal shelter came to the home where Bruce lived with his owners and their children. Bruce was napping with one of the children, as I understand that Bruce had not been outside his home that day at any time.
Ma'am, excuse me, I was told by the city attorney that you're off subject.
I'm off subject talking about a removal of a dog from a home?
There's a specific agenda and the agenda item is, and the agenda you're talking about is civics, the council and citizens, but you're talking about animal control and a specific, a specific incident.
I was talking about the dog being removed from the home without a warrant.
Madam Mayor, point of order.
That is not on the agenda.
Mr. Fornino, you had your four minutes.
He said point of order.
You had your four minutes. You can continue, Ms. Marcy.
So just go on to the next one? We can't discuss the removal of the dog being.
That's what the city attorney said, ma'am.
Oh, we'll remember that. Okay. Number four, the action of the Colleen city council to place an item on the election ballot last year for Colleen residents to vote legalization marijuana in the city of Colleen, Texas. This is illegal and never should have occurred. It's my understanding that Bell County, Texas recently sued the city of Colleen regarding this action by the city council pertaining to the election ballot and that the state of Texas is currently considering filing a suit against the city of Colleen. It's my understanding that state of Texas laws have jurisdiction over county and city laws. The following are just a few of our rights that are guaranteed under the United States Constitution and include peaceable assembly, freedom of speech, search and seizure, invasion of privacy, and service of warrants, et cetera. And our local laws regarding the prosecution of people committing crimes should automatically be implemented by Colleen officers and not left to the officers' discretion. I believe that the Colleen city staff and the Colleen city council should refresh their memories and read the United States Constitution, First, Third, Fourth, Fifth, Ninth and Fourteenth Amendments, and also refresh their memories regarding local laws that should be enforced by our police officers. It appears that Colleen city council members vote the way they feel about an agenda item and do not respect the opinions of the Colleen residents. The residents of Colleen voted for you and put you on the city council. Might be a good idea to try to understand how the residents feel and believe about agenda items. And just a reminder, we do have an election next month at which the residents of Colleen will be electing new Colleen city council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anka, Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't, I'm not sure exactly what, Ms. Marcy, you're talking about as far as right to assemble or whatever. I would ask that anybody who has an issue, at least gives us a chance to work at it. This has been brought up now twice by two different citizens and I don't know what you're talking about. And that does not reflect poorly on the fact that I can't be everywhere in Colleen and watch everybody who decides to protest. But it does speak to the fact that if you really want to get a problem fixed, try to contact us, try to talk it out as opposed to coming here and trying to, I don't know what this is supposed to be. But ultimately, if we're trying to really solve problems, bring that situation up to us in a way that we can actually do something about it. So with that.
We can comment about that?
Yes, I'm actually, I asked your question, I'm asking you a question. What are you talking about when you're talking about this freedom to assemble?
We're talking about a peaceable march. And the lady's going to talk about it later.
No, I'm, I need to hear from you, ma'am. You need to come to the mic. We can't hear you. I, yeah, but they can't hear.
She's trying to get a hearing on. So I can't get ahold of any of you. All your phones, all your messages are full. You can't even message for it.
That's not true.
Thank you, Ms. Marcy.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it is true.
No, it's not.
Ms. Anka, it's your time. You have four minutes.
I answered the phone call, ma'am.
You have four minutes. Good evening, stop.
Thank you. Counselmembers, Madam Mayor, I'm actually going to address exactly your question later on in my speech. I'm here to speak about constitutional rights of citizens as they relate to the interactions with Colleen shelter staff and the Colleen police department. I believe in the rights of citizens to feel safe and to have equal protection under the law. Over the past years, I have heard numerous complaints regarding treatment of citizens by the Colleen Animal Shelter. Perhaps one of the most concerning comments I heard is as follows, quote, "I would never say anything negative about the animal shelter staff because that is a sure way for them to show up at my house." Counselmembers, this is unacceptable. Unfortunately, this reflects on the police department. Shelter staff seem to rely heavily on the police anytime they want to intimidate people. All they have to do is call the police for assistance. Police officers have been used by Colleen shelter staff to intimidate citizens. Police officers have been used by Colleen shelter staff to intimidate peaceful protesters that I was a part of and deny their constitutional rights. But the council, through your vote of Proposition A, will punish the same officers for enforcing state law. The council and the Colleen Animal Shelter make a joke out of the police department. I care too much about the police, not to say anything when I see them wrong, being wrongly used by the city for what seems to be unlawful purposes. There is a chance of a lawsuit because of what happened to Bruce, the dog we believe was wrongly euthanized by the Colleen shelter with the help of the police department. The dog could have been saved. Shelter staff knew he had an adopter.
Ma'am, Ms. Anka, you're off topic.
I'm not, but I'll go on.
According to the city attorney, you are, so continue. You have two minutes and five seconds.
They will argue that they have the authority to do that. Here's the problem, a lawsuit would hurt the police department. That is not okay. I am willing to defend the police and the police only. They should not be placed in this situation. This is my formal complaint against the Colleen shelter for violating citizens' rights and for using the police as a weapon. I request a full audit of the Colleen Animal Shelter to include the last five years. Also, all employees who have been with the shelter longer than a year should be relieved of their duties immediately.
Ma'am, you're still off topic. You cannot go specific. You are on, let's go back to which one you signed up for.
Well, Mr. Wilkerson asked us what we're talking about.
I asked her. I didn't ask you anything.
Got it. I respectfully ask Assistant Chief Gerhardt to have a meeting with members of the public to discuss issues. I respectfully ask Assistant Chief Gerhardt to have a meeting with members of the public to discuss issues with animal control. I requested the police review and restructure their relationship with the Colleen Animal Shelter. Regarding a recent incident, I was very disappointed in the police when they stopped me.
Ma'am, you're still off topic.
It's the right of assembly.
City attorney, when they say you're off topic, ma'am, she, she's the lawyer, and she's saying you're off topic. So please continue. You have one minute and eleven seconds.
This is not what the police are want, and I know the Colleen Police Department is better than this. Regarding the cancellation of the Crime Solutions Committee meeting scheduled for March twenty-second, with all due respect, there was in fact a quorum. The meeting could have taken place. However, an email was sent by staff telling all the members that there's no quorum and the meeting was canceled. That was not an actual lack of quorum. It was manufactured. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Melissa Brown. Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
I'm going to kind of change up a little bit of what I'm talking about on the fly here because civics is a very, very broad subject. And when you're telling people that what they're saying doesn't relate to civics, when they're up here talking about their feelings about the city government, how it's operated, the city council, their responses to complaints when they're brought forward in a public setting at the city council meeting, which is the right to grievance under the First Amendment, that absolutely one hundred percent relates to civics, and it's not up for personal interpretation other than the person who has the complaint or the concern. So, that's my grievance. With that said, I, for the closed captioning system, there is a recommendation to just go with YouTube where we could have the closed captioning be done for free. September twenty-first of two thousand twenty-one, the city council unanimously, or I'm sorry, six to one approved the purchase of Enco Captioning for seventy-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars, so the six thousand dollar annual subscription. Now, the lowest price is a hundred and two thousand dollars. I don't feel that YouTube captioning is going to be sufficient. Our ADA consultants, when they came in and spoke to the council, told us that one of the easiest ways for us to start coming into compliance would be to offer closed captioning right here in person on these TVs. What happened to the eighty thousand dollars that was approved in two thousand twenty-one? I've asked this before. I'm asking it again. I would truly appreciate a response to it this time. As far as the TERS and giving almost thirteen million dollars to a private developer for mixed residential and very small portion commercial, this is not something that we offer to the benefit of any of our local developers. In fact, given that none of this is truly public infrastructure, none of these roads are going to be thoroughfares, none of them are going to be connecting from one side to the other where we're expecting them to be used for anything other than the shopping center and other than the people who are living in this development, that takes it out of the public realm and makes it private. If I were to go stand there and do something on the corner, on the sidewalk, in front of those retail stores, I would get arrested and told that it is private property. Unless we're going to make it public property and we have an agreement with the developer saying that this is now going to be public property, and then the city should be getting at least part of those annual revenues from the rents that are given to them. If the city isn't getting any of those rents, it's private. This, no, it's private if the city isn't getting anything. Public means that there is a portion of that that's coming back to us. And to be giving them any kind of TERS benefits just because, for residential, is even more insane to me. When it comes to the, the change for the mid-year budget amendment and potentially for the certificate of obligations, instead of spending two million dollars to build a homeless shelter that is going to duplicate something we already have and is allegedly supposed to be ran by a nonprofit that doesn't even exist yet, let's take that two million dollars, put it into building the new parks maintenance facility instead of taking out a bond for it and putting us, ourselves in two million, two million dollars further in debt on that one. And then as far as Section Thirty-One, the city council, or the city, sorry, is operating on a use-it-or-lose-it program. Look at this Ginspott, Angory and Santa Fe, who is on the registration for vacant buildings, even though it's not vacant, it's just not actively being used. They're building across from Solutions One where they're actively trying to work on things. However, it's not the city's time. It's not the way the city wants it to be done. Taking this and putting it in the hands of one person, allowing one single individual to say yes, it's demolition by neglect, which will give us the ability to move forward. May I finish with my last two sentiments, please?
We have a no, no? Okay, Mayor Proton?
Thank you, ma'am, for coming up. There's two questions I have relevant to what you were talking about. For one, it may be a question for the staff, but for the tiers or TERS, does it have to be? Is it private? I thought that that was a zoning issue, not whether it was private or, private or public.
Everything we're talking about incentivizing is absolutely public property. Those sidewalks, the roadway, it's public property. We would not spend those funds on private property.
Okay.
How can-
Your second question-
My question to that, though, was how it does it become, how is it public property other than them dedicating it to us in order for us to pay for it?
I'm not sure. I just wanted to get that clarified before, because you did allude to the fact that it was a private venture.
It is a private venture.
Your second question-
And the second question is that I know you made a comment about it being within the realm of civics. So if we have that, if we have that every agenda, somebody says they want to do a citizen petitions about civics, we really could open up the agenda to anything if that was true. I don't believe that that's true. I do believe that civics has a specific notation of what we're talking about as it pertains to each agenda. Not just, it doesn't just open the agenda up to anything. So that's all I, like you say about-
Thank you. Amanda, your time is up. Ma'am, good evening. You have four minutes.
This is the lack of civics in the First Amendment, says rights to petition your government on grievances.
Melissa Brown, your time is up. Thank you. Ma'am, how are you doing? You have four minutes.
This probably won't take that long, then. I'm the owner of Bruce. I was the one who was wronged.
Ma'am, Bruce is not on the agenda.
I'm not talking, again, it's the situation in which I was wronged. We did a peaceful protest, period. We weren't out there screaming. We had no bull horns. We had a sign.
Ma'am-
This again is the, the freedom of speech.
You can have freedom of speech, but that specific thing is not on the agenda.
Over and over again. This is the problem. Your police officers, all of the people who have called upon us-
Ma'am, you can do a citizen petition for the week after next, and you can talk about anything you would like, and that could be the subject. But tonight, we'll focus on the agenda.
Okay. Well, your police officers, those who are under your police officers, those who you represent as citizens, I feel have failed the city of Colleen multiple times. Over and over and over again. I feel that each and every one of you should look at your constituents and see what they are in need of. When was the last time you spoke to them? Right. Out of everyone on this council, I got an email and a phone call from one, and he's not even in my district. He's an old friend. Isn't that a shame? Isn't that a darn shame? I'm hurt. I used to be proud to live in this city. Can anyone else say the same? I don't think so. Of my council members, who lives in the city of Colleen? By a raise of hands, anyone? All of you. Every one of you. So you don't live in Gerald? No one lives by Belton? Y'all live in the city of Colleen?
Ma'am, we get back on the subject.
Well, that is my subject. If you are representing us, I says I would recommend that you live here at least. Because then it turns in for laws for thee but not for me. Do as I say, not as I do. I try not to be emotional when I'm up here. I do. But when I have to look at my babies and they are afraid to see the vehicles, police, animal control, code enforcement, coming down the road, and they're giving my babies PTSD? Yeah, I got a problem. Got a big problem. So I am sorry you feel that it is not on your agenda, that it is not in your realm of practice for tonight. But I will say that at some point, you gotta listen. Because at some point, you can be fired. But I will always live in the same house, and I will have my babies, and I will have my friends and my neighbors, but I won't have to see you up here anymore. Then what? Nobody? I'm done. I'll leave the rest of my remaining time to whoever wants it.
Thank you. Michael Fornino?
Who's?
Councilmember Board, you had a question?
I actually had a comment.
Oh, wait a minute. See if she's finished. Ma'am, are you finished?
Yeah, well, he had a comment, so I was assuming that's what it was.
It's not related directly to what you presented.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do understand that it can be frustrating to be reminded that it's not on the agenda. But the fact of the matter is, established protocols are in place for us to stay efficient on the agenda. Protocols that we did not establish, that we are, that are grandfathered to, that, I mean, it's just a part of the meeting. So, I mean, I understand the frustration there. But I want to get to this point. As your elected officials, you have the right to reach out to us, okay? To call us, to text us, send us a Facebook message, all that stuff. And I'll speak for my district, okay, for District Four. When folks reach out to me, they get a response. They get a call back. We work to resolve those issues. I don't have that problem in my district. I don't want to come across that every council member up here is not responsible or not working to take care of issues or not available to their constituents, because that's just not the case. You know, I'm not a fan of the theme of things are not effective or things aren't getting done. We are working very hard to improve this city. City of Colleen is not perfect, but we're working to improve those things that we do have control over. I just want to make that mention. Thank you.
Counsel, thank you. Counsel Lomig Gonzalez?
Thank you. I also want to let the citizens know that there have been concerns and conversations and follow-up that's been done with certain members of our former Animal Advisory Commission, conversations with community members. And there are also wheels that are turning that unfortunately sometimes you can't see, things that are being looked into. So I would just ask for your patience, but also continued follow-up on the certain subjects that are important to you. There are certain things that are being worked on right now that you might not see the results of, or we heard your concern and we're investigating or researching. So I just wanted to encourage that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Fornino? Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
With regard to the marijuana lawsuit, you folks have a funny command of civics. Civics, when we're discussing the process, that's civics. It's a general topic. You'll shut citizens down on that point when it comes to just general comment. But that command didn't seem to apply for this whole Prop A nonsense, which is going to force us to spend money that we didn't need to spend. Had the city attorney had a better command of civics on that point, okay? Yes, you can laugh, Mrs. Mayor, okay? Channel Ten already caught your smug behavior while other citizens were up here. That's disrespectful. You talk about deportment and all of that?
Hey, point water. Hey, when you get up here and address us, you can say whatever it is within the context of the agenda.
This is, it's a broad topic. I realize that may be difficult for you to understand.
Calm down. You can get up here and say anything that you'd like about the agenda. When you start making personal statements about people's behavior-
Perhaps I should play the voicemail you left me, all forty-six seconds of it, including your involvement with the Fort Hood shooting.
Mr. Fornino, Mayor Proton, Mayor Proton?
My involvement with the-
Mayor Proton. Mayor Proton, let him finish his three minutes and thirteen seconds, and you can speak after him. Continue, please.
We're spending, we're going to be, we're going to be spending money on a lawsuit that should never have happened, okay? Prop A is a result of your ego and lack of understanding of civics. There's a way to change the law. But magically, the city attorney, with her advice and all of your lack of command of civics and how the law works, has put us in this position, okay? That's just from the county attorney. How much money are we going to have to spend when the Attorney General decides to drop the hammer on this town? That's more of our money due to your egos and irresponsibility. Whether you're for or against it, common sense, okay? There's a way to change the law. There's a way to do things. You don't do it. You do whatever you want to do, not what we want to do, not what the law says you have to do. Madam Mayor, I, I look at the council whenever I don't have anything to read, okay? The fact that you look like you're an astronomer right now and not giving me eye contact, that's very disrespectful.
You have two minutes and fourteen seconds.
Okay. Here we are. Laws for thee, not for me, exactly as the nice lady before me had to say. I mean, this goes on and on and on and on. We would not be in this position with marijuana lawsuit, okay? Again, money, our money has to get spent on this. And we're going to have to hire a law firm because there's nobody in this body, in this room, that is legally oriented or has the acumen or experiences a litigator to fight the county attorney and all the resources they have to bear. Just no experience, okay? You started to mess with things that you clearly couldn't control and couldn't understand. Again, I have my stance on marijuana. Other citizens have theirs. But if the law is to change, there's a way to do it, okay? Take your egos out of the equation, and we'll stop paying the bills for it. We have money to spend on other, more useful, more productive things for the city of Colleen, the residents of Colleen, and not your personal agendas and egos.
Okay, yeah. Now, for clarification, what exactly about the Fort Hood shooting do I have anything to do with?
Mayor Proton, Mayor Proton?
This is clarification, ma'am.
That is not on the agenda. He was off agenda when he brought it up, and now you're off.
Well, let me clarify.
Mayor Proton?
Ma'am?
Mr. Patrick Pierfay, sir, I mispronounced your name. Mr. Patrick? Sir, I apologize. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary? Mr. Mayor Proton?
Mayor, let him go. Let him go, mayor.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
To Madam Mayor, the rest of the council, and the members here, the citizens who have come out here to engage in the city's business, I understand that we're not going to agree on everything as far as how we run this, how we run this city. Everybody who came up here, came up here for a better way of running the city. We don't get upset when we differ on opinions. But when you're going to go so low as to bring somebody's personal life, their military career, under fire, in public, that's nothing that I can just stand by as an individual and let go. But I do apologize to you that you had to see that take place tonight. I apologize for that, and I will think hard and long whether or not this is something I need to be doing. If I can get triggered by some person that just comes up and just blurts out whatever they want to blurt out, because that's very disrespectful. He's done it many times to other council members, and this is where it just ended. So in the future, hopefully, we can conduct ourselves. I can do better, because I am better. I do apologize to all of you, and I hope that we can go ahead and continue this meeting and get through it. And again, Madam Mayor, I apologize.
Yes, Madam Mayor Proton. We're going to call this meeting back to order. Madam Secretary?
MN Two Three Zero Zero Eight, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of March twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three. RS Twenty Three Zero Six Seven, consider a memorandum resolution accepting a Federal Aviation Administration Airport Infrastructure Grant for the design of the security improvements project at Colleen Fort Hood Regional Airport. RS Twenty Three Zero Six Eight, consider a memorandum resolution- Consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with Garver LLC for design of the Security Improvements Project at Killeen-Fort Hood Regional Airport in the amount of $120,900. RS 23069. Consider a memorandum resolution approving a fireworks display application at the Killeen Athletic Complex on July 1, 2023. RS 23070. Consider a memorandum resolution authorizing change orders with Sills Be Ford for the total amount of $225,278.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Resolutions. RS 23071? Madam Secretary?
Yes. RS 23071. Consider a memorandum resolution authorizing Addendum Number 8 for the Bell County Water Control and Improvement District Number 1 Lake Belton Plant Power Resilience Project in the amount of $431,789.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Hopefully, I'm gonna bring an item that won't be so contentious, and we can get through this one a little bit easier. But tonight, I am bringing to you this Addendum Number 8 for the Lake Belton Water Plant Power Resilience Project. And you may remember that Senate Bill 3 from the 87th Texas Legislature had required all water providers to be able to develop and implement an emergency preparing this plan, or EPP. Bell County WCID's EPP includes the installation of standby generators at the Belton Water Plant to provide water to all customers for at least 24 hours in the event of a power outage. On June 28th of last year, the city council approved Addendum Number 7, amending the contract that we have with Bell County WCID Number 1 to be able, so that they could build the Lake Belton Water Plant Power Resilience Project. And the amount of that Addendum Number 7 was $4,895,000. WCID Number 1 has come back to the city requesting an additional, right at a little bit less than a million dollars. The reason for this is, is that original Addendum Number 7 was from pricing from March of 2022. As we all know, prices have gone up considerably. So they have now come to the city asking for us to be able to pay our percentage of that total, right at a million dollars, that 43.2%, which our part of that is $431,789. So if you include the original amount from Addendum 7, plus this from Addendum 8, we are now, the city will be paying towards this project $5.327 million, basically. The district has submitted this Addendum Number 8, requesting this additional funding as a lump sum payable to the district on or before July 1 of this year. This additional $432,000, basically, has been added to a proposed mid-year budget amendment. As you can see from the spreadsheet, it kind of goes through everything that had happened with this, this project from WCID Number 1. Again, the original scope, total cost of around $16 million. You can see that Fort Hood, through grant funding, has provided two different amounts, right at $5 million. The original Addendum Number 7 was at $10 million. So again, that is what's left over, is this right at a million dollars that needs to be taken care of. And as you see, again, our part of that is the $432,000, basically. So in regards to alternatives, it's to be able to accept this Addendum Number 8, or to not accept it. And staff recommends to city council that you approve the attached resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of Addendum Number 8 to the amended and restated water supply contract of April 1, 2004. And I would be happy to answer any question that you may have regarding this item.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Adams?
And please don't take this wrong, sir.
Sure.
And I said this to WCID, but when they pop up, but they short turn around and ask us for some money, it kind of puts us in a bad way when they know our budgeting cycle. So the first question is, where's the money coming from if we approve this?
We had a discussion with WCID several months back, and so we looked at the budget. There is money available in our mid-year budget amendment, so that's why it's coming to you tonight, because we wanted to come, bring it to you when we had the funding available for it. And so it's money that would go into the CIP, so it's available for this project. And it's, would be dedicated later in this same meeting.
Okay, so, and then when we, so we pay WCID as a user, and that's so they can conduct their operations. And from what I recall, back in 2001, there were several laws and presidential directives that affect Fort Hood related to that generator, that their costs of doing business should have been taken out of that. And then we recently found out that they didn't have this. So I'm sorry, I'm re-expressing my disdain for them not having done this project 20 years ago, and the price would have been cheaper. And why, does, does WCID, why can't they cover the entire cost themselves?
Ultimately, we're paying WCID, right? And so they have to pass that cost along to their customer in some way, shape, or form. And on this, they did give us the option to actually downgrade, not put as many generators to be, to be able to cover the same amount we originally. And we are not recommending we go forward with that. We think it's better to do the project right. We have the funds for it. And there was the grant associated with this, so we did get some benefit with Fort Hood being involved. They got the majority of that grant, because it was for them, but we are seeing a benefit as well.
Okay, so I guess it'll go back to the original contract that we signed with WCID, I guess, years ago? Because I constantly see references of an amendment to contracts, and I know we have voted to amend, but we don't know what we're amending. And so I, I don't know if council agree with this, but if we can get an update, an original, a brief or something that tells us what was in the original contract regarding WCID. I, I see the need for this, and, but I, I have some issues. Thank you.
Councilmember Board?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question for you, Mr. Connor, and again, good evening. What might be the reason the project was started, was not started shortly after receiving the original request for a proposal pricing?
Sure, basically, like any construction project, it's, it's having to get everything in order and in place. One of the things that was very fluid and the major component in this project are those generators, which, again, from everything that we've heard, that they're supposed to be here sometime June or July, which, to me, I was very surprised, because, again, many of them, and very large. But they were able to work through all of that. But as Senate Bill 3 kind of made its way through, and everyone was impacted, even the city of Killeen, I mean, we're, we're, we'll be putting in a couple of generators as well. It, the whole generator market went kind of crazy, because everybody was in need of those. And so that, again, that pricing from back in 2022, everything has just escalated. And, and that's what's kind of driving this.
Gotcha.
So, again, it was their project. I think, you know, from my experience and walking with them through that, I think they've done a very good job, especially to be able to get it to this point, and to be at, by the end of the year, those, those generators could be in place. That, that was amazing to me.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Board. This is not a need, want, this is something that we need as we move forward. So I thank you and your team for all the hard work on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 23072. Consider a memorandum resolution securing a closed caption system.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Assistant City Manager. So in August of 2021, city council gave direction for staff to explore closed captioning options. Closed captioning does meet ADA compliance requirements for the hearing impaired. The city wants to make sure that we are reaching community members who may require accommodations of AV feeds for public meetings. This will help reach a broader audience for webcasting and live broadcasts. Staff did conduct onsite testing, as well as visited agencies using closed captioning technology. And there were three vendors that were tested. And then we brought those three vendors in to test on our current system. They were Enco, Swaget, and Granicus. Granicus is our current vendor for live streaming our meetings right now. And they had a closed captioning cost of $102,000 with incremental increases each year. After extensive onsite tests of each of those vendors, a solution that was at no cost offered the best solution, and that was our own YouTube channel. Research on central Texas cities found that the use of live and closed captioning is not provided at several city council meetings in several cities. We looked at more than a dozen. Those cities are listed here. They have populations of 20,000 to 200,000. And some cities also provide meetings as we are proposing, which is through a YouTube broadcast. It has been and will continue to be difficult to measure the full benefit to the community using the existing meeting management system that we have. On the ADA side, it does say for state and local governments that in determining whether a particular aid or service would result in undue financial and administrative burdens, that entity should take into consideration the cost of the particular aid or service in light of all the resources available to fund the program, the service, or activity, and the effect on the other expenses or operations. The decision, the decision that a particular aid or service would result in undue burden must be made by a particular, be made by a high-level official. This is just an example. We have put our last five or so meetings on YouTube showing the closed captioning of our April 4 meeting that is currently on our, our feed. And these are our alternatives, which are to authorize the procurement of a closed captioning system, accommodations for the hearing, not to authorize, I'm sorry, for the hearing impaired, or to authorize Granicus, which will be $102,000 for this fiscal year. PEG funds would not be an option due to the recurring fee. Or to authorize the meeting recordings to be placed on the city's YouTube channel with a closed captioning service option at no cost, and continue with the American Sign Language option, which is currently by request. Staff does recommend the final option.
Thank you. Mrs. Ford, I have only two concerns. The YouTube, I think is great, but if you don't have internet, you won't be able to tap into YouTube. That's one of my concerns. But we do file in with the ADA compliance, so we do file in with that. So why is like this meeting tonight, why we cannot have closed caption for, for this particular meeting, like on cable TV?
But it was more so because of that, the additional cost. So there are costs associated with having it on a cable TV. We looked at several different factors, which is that more than half of Americans have cut the cord. So when it comes to cable TV, it is a less and less number of people who are subscribing or having accounts with Spectrum. They've dipped significantly, whereas live streaming, any of the streaming casts, those have gone up. Those have increased significantly. So we're trying to be proactive and progressive when it comes to what it's going to look like in the future. And also, YouTube is HD. The picture and quality is much better than our Channel 10 on Spectrum, so.
And my last question, can we not post our meetings on Facebook? Or is it impossible to do it?
We can post them on, on Facebook right now. If you have internet, we have them. They're always, obviously, live streamed on our website at killeentexas.gov/councilmeetings. Every, every single meeting is live cast, and then also, now we have them on, on YouTube with the captioning as well. They also do run on Spectrum Cable Channel 10 constantly throughout the day, 24/7.
Because we get a lot of action, thanks to you and your team. Thank you on our Facebook page, because it's a lot of current events, a lot of things that's going on, on our Facebook page. So thank you for all of that, and your team. Councilmember Board?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two questions, Mrs. Ford. So if I'm watching the council meeting on Channel 10, am I able to receive closed captioning?
Currently, no.
Okay, even if the TV is, can be set to receive closed captioning?
Even if you press it on the button on your remote, and you go to your settings and try it, no, Spectrum does not, does not offer that.
Okay.
Without it, there is, there is additional fees that we would have to pay, yes.
Understood. And if we went with the YouTube version, when the videos are replayed on Channel 10, would they then include the closed captioning?
Not currently. That is something that we're looking into, is that, yes, they would replay with YouTube captioning, but we do not, we would not have that in place as of right now.
Okay, and thank you for that. The second question is, have we researched the potential drawbacks, if any, of relying on YouTube to provide closed captioning for our citizens?
Well, I think, just like with any, whether we rely on Facebook or anything else that we can't control ourselves, there's always that issue where, just like Facebook can go down, and it has, YouTube may be able to go down, and, and I don't know that it has, but it could crash, just like Facebook has in the past.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Thank you. Does the YouTube closed captioning, is that considered sufficient for ADA standards?
It is, and so, over the last couple of years, it's been several attorneys who have weighed in with different cities, and it is of the grants that it is okay to use. We are compliant, we're using YouTube. Is it the best, most recommended? No, it's not. Is it, is it the, the most cost-efficient? Yes, but it, it is what our attorneys, well, not our attorneys, but attorneys that are, who are dealing with other cities have said, this is compliant. And so there are several cities that use YouTube as their option.
Okay, and then the question was asked by a constituent about the $80,000 that was previously allocated. Where, what happens to those funds that were previously allocated for the closed captioning? We do not go with one of the services that we have previously considered?
I believe that the funds that were allocated before were through PEG funds. And again, over the last couple of years, after doing more research, there are some cities that use PEG funds, there are some that don't. There are attorneys that tell you cannot use the PEG funds, and the reason why, and attorneys that tell you can use them, and the reason why. So we're trying to be safe and making sure that nothing comes back in the end. And by it says, we want to make sure we are safe, and so that's why we're not using, I had in the presentation that we were not able to use the PEG funds due to the recurring fees, which is something that is indicated when you are not able to use PEG funds. So initially, that's where the money was going to be coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23073. Consider a memorandum resolution approving a tax increment reinvestment zone reimbursement agreement with CSW Killeen LP for reimbursement of certain infrastructure costs associated with the development of Anthem Park in an amount not to exceed $12,741,99.
Thank you. Mr. Rubeo?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, Council Protem, Council and Assistant City Manager. This Anthem Park reimbursement agreement, if you will recall, on March 14, the council passed the rezoning requests associated with Anthem Park development. If you recall, that proposed development included the acreage that's listed here in terms of the uses. In addition to that, you will recall that this proposed development includes 2.8 million square feet of improvement, a half a billion dollars' worth of projected property value at the time of full buildout. Projected, projected property and sales tax revenues at the time of full buildout at $7 million a year, and total sales and property tax right at $125 million. This chart really just shows that supporting information, if you notice in the right-hand corner at the bottom, across totals, that half a billion dollar valuation at full buildout. And this, and this chart shows the supporting information associated with the $125 million that we mentioned. So you can see that division of sales tax revenue through 2041 is projected to be at about $28 million, and property tax revenues is projected to be about $96 million. It's also important to note that because this is a part of the terms, the returns associated with the property tax revenue is not just the revenue that's coming from the city of Killeen, but it's also coming from Bell County and Central Texas College. This agreement that's in front of you, basically, we are allowed to enter into the agreement as a city, with the developer, and provide funding from the tax increment to pay for costs associated with this project, since it's located in the reinvestment zone. And specifically, the costs that we are talking about today are related to the construction cost of, of costs of roads, sidewalks, and other public infrastructure associated with Anthem Boulevard, which is a public, which will be a public roadway. It's approximately about 4,000 linear feet in length and three-lane with a boulevard down the middle. If you recall, the council back in December approved the TERS project and financing plan. Within that plan, you remember, we projected the cost of about $113,500. And also amongst that was an allocation of $14 million for economic development and public infrastructure reimbursements. And so this request for the $12.7 million would come from that line item within that approved project and financing plan. And that's what that next slide is really saying, not to exceed the $12,741,099. And then this slide gives a cost breakdown, so you know specifically what those reimbursements would be related to. And again, I want to stress that all of this is related to the Anthem Boulevard and all of the support, public infrastructure that supports that boulevard. So within the reimbursement agreement, just so that we understand it a little bit more clearly in terms of how it works, the city will reimburse the developer based on available project TERS funds. And it's really available project TERS funds associated with what this project puts into the TERS. So as you know, there are many properties that are located within the TERS, and they all contribute to the TERS in terms of a tax increment. But the reimbursement associated with this development will only come from the tax increment that is produced by this development when it becomes available. And so if we go into the details here, you can see that 100% of the tax increment created by the commercial development will be immediately available. But just to give you an idea of what that means, if they bill a commercial development and its tax value is $3 million, and we assume that the basis is $0, just for this assumption, then the tax increment would be that entire $3 million. And at the time, it's valued at that, that's when they could be able to pull from that in terms of their actual expenditure. So they wouldn't be able to pull necessarily the entire $3 million in that scenario unless they actually had expenditures to that amount. Okay? Now, a portion of the tax increment created by the residential development will become available, but it will become available based on the sliding scale that's noted in these words here. And then later on, there's a table that makes this a little easier to understand. So until the commercial value, and that is set by the Bell County Tax Officer, reaches $10 million, none of the residential tax increment that is produced from the residential development that they may bill will contribute to this, only what is available from the commercial tax increment. When the value of the commercial reaches and exceeds $10 million, then in addition to what's available from the commercial, 25% of the residential tax increment will become available for reimbursement for actual costs. And then the scenario kind of repeats. At 20 million is 50%, and at 26 million, it's at 75%. And we think this is important because 26 million actually represents about a third of the retail value that is projected to be there. And it also represents about a quarter of the entire commercial value that could be there. So we think that that would be a significant investment in place for this project. And again, as you notice on this slide, I just want to deal with that bullet on the bottom, what we're attempting to do with the structure of this agreement is just ensure that the commercial development is built in a timely manner. And the table, again, just shows very quickly and succinctly what I said in words. Staff recommends approval of this reimbursement agreement as presented. And then also, this slide was actually produced before we had this board meeting, but we had the TERS board meeting on April 12th, and the TERS board recommended approval of the proposed agreement by a vote of seven to zero. It was unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Mabres.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Revell. And you said this multiple times, but I wanted to just reiterate it again, because I've had some residents reach out to me, and they're kind of sticker shock, and they're saying, well, you're going to give these people $12 million? And my response to them was kind of what you said, exactly what you said. But I wanted to reiterate it here on this meeting, that we're not giving anybody any money. We're not giving them $12 million. We're merely reimbursing them from the own funds that they're generating through property tax and sales tax.
Yes, sir.
So it's kind of giving them money that they are generating because of the development. So we're not giving them anything upfront. And it's performance-based, so they have to perform, and they have to invest and get the project kind of up to certain benchmarks before they can receive those reimbursements.
Yes, sir.
I just want to, again, just reiterate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Revell. Madam Secretary.
RS 23074. Consider a memorandum resolution authorizing proceeding with issuance of certificates of obligation for capital projects and further directing the publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation for capital projects.
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Strick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the notice of intent to issue the certificates of obligation. So a little background, the projects were identified during the FY '23 budget and CIP process. Citizen input was sought by city council. We had a special workshop on January 9th. We had a website survey that was available from January to March. Then we held the special workshop on March 30th. The COs would have no increase to the FY '24 tax rate. So for the certificates of obligation, the tax pledge will be a source of payment for the debt service. This would be a resolution of intention authorizing the proceeding with the issuance of the COs, identifying allowed uses of the proceeds for specific capital projects. It would set the maximum principal amount at $32 million. It would direct the publication of the public notice and authorize the payment of the Attorney General Examination Fee of $9,500. So the proposed priority project list would include the police parking expansion for the construction, the police evidence storage building for the construction portion, the parks maintenance facility construction portion, the Skylark fixed base operator building, the parks construction and renovation for four and a half million, and then the fleet services facility, and then, of course, issuance cost and contingency. And that would total $32 million. So the remaining steps would be to publish the notice. And then on May 30th, there would be an application for rating for the CO. On June 29th, we would have the official statement distributed to the bidders. And then on July 11th, the bids would be received, and the city council would consider the ordinance to actually authorize the issuance of the CO. And then on August 2nd, we would have the closing, and the funds would be delivered. We would start the projects. So your alternatives would be to not approve, approve with a different amount, or approve with proceeding the issuance, and further directing the publication of the notice of intention. And of course, our recommendation is to approve. And I would be happy to answer any questions. We also have the bond counsel and the financial advisor here as well, if you have questions for them.
Thank you. This is an item that the council has discussed in detail, and we thank you and your staff for bringing this. It's excellent. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
OR 23009. Consider an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances, providing for certain exemptions to the Parkland Dedication and Development Ordinance.
Welcome back, Mr. Revell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Assistant City Manager. This is an item to amend the Parkland Dedication and Development Ordinance that was adopted back in January of this year. The section noted in the second bullet provides certain exemptions to the Parkland Dedication and Development Ordinance. Those specific exceptions are noted here. As written, the section doesn't provide exemption for existing lots that were not previously subject to the Parkland Dedication Ordinance, which means that basically an applicant that's trying to replant an existing residential lot that was planted prior to the adoption of the ordinance still has to pay the Parkland Dedication and Park Development fees. And as noted here, that could amount to $1,200 per lot. What we're requesting to do tonight, while requesting, sharing with you and requesting your approval on for next week, is to amend the proposed ordinance such that the exemption is extended to include mono-plats of existing residential lots, even if the lots were not previously subjected to the Parkland Ordinance, provided it doesn't increase the number of lots, and you could even say does not increase the number of dwelling units. The proposed ordinance would be amended as noted on your slide, basically, again, allowing for those existing lots that may be considered minor or amended or development plats, provided that they do not increase residential intensity to be exempt from the requirements of the Parkland Dedication Ordinance as relates to their fees. Then alternatives are noted there, and the staff has recommended approval of ordinance as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Revell. Madam Secretary.
PH 23023. Hold a public hearing and consider a request submitted by Franklin Land Associates LLC on behalf of Cashstrong LLC, case number Z23-03, to rezone approximately 2.34 acres out of the BS Hoover survey, abstract number 463, from A Agricultural District to NBD Neighborhood Business District, with a conditional use permit to allow for a single-tenant general retail store no greater than 10,641 square feet. The property is located east of State Highway 195 and north of the Lampasses River, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Revell.
It's noted on your agenda before you, this property rezoning request is associated with allowing a conditional use permit for a single-tenant general retail store for no greater than 10,641 square feet. The approximate location is shown designated by the star, 195. The vicinity map showing the location of the area is here. If approved, the applicant does intend to develop a general retail store on the property. The Neighborhood Business District basically is based off of the B3, but it does have the local business district, but it does have some exclusions. In the Neighborhood Business District, it does mention that the gross size of buildings can be no more than 10,000 square feet, and no single lease or own building can exceed 4,000 square feet, and therefore the need for a conditional use permit, because this applicant is proposing a single-tenant building greater than 10,000 square feet. All of the comprehensive plan analysis has been done, and it's consistent with all of those analyses. So I'll pause for a moment, but keep going. Staff finds that, again, that this aligns completely with the comprehensive plan, providing resources to the surrounding neighborhood. The property is not located within a FEMA-designated special flood hazard area. It does have riverine habitat associated as depicted on the National Wetlands Inventory Map. This is a view of the subject property looking north, view of the property looking west. All of the public notification requirements have been met and are noted on the slide. No written responses to date have been received. Notification extends, so noted. The alternatives as what is listed before you, and we're recommending as staff for approval of the CUP for the single-tenant general retail store for a size of no greater than 10,641 square feet. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this case, votes seven to one, March 20th to recommend approval. Council Vice Chair Gukaisen expressed concerns regarding the development's location in the riverine habitat, and then concerns in general about giving up too much agricultural area to small commercial developments.
Thank you. Councilmember Mabres.
Thank you, Mayor and Mr. Revell.
Yes, sir.
I believe this same issue's come up at least one time before that I can recall. Maybe it was when I was served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for another general retail store. They had the same issue. It was just slightly over the 10,000 square foot threshold. In your opinion, do you think this is something that we should look at in the actual business district ordinance to avoid from having to come back for all these individual CUPs? Do you need to go from 10,000 to 11,000 square feet? Because this is the second one, like I said, and it's slightly over. To me personally, 641 square feet doesn't make a difference. But I can see where, at least for staff, processing all these may become a burden on you guys. So I'd just like to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah, so the intent of the Neighborhood Business District was to allow for retail uses, but allow those uses at the neighborhood scale. And so a lot of the square foot limitation was for that reason, to keep that in mind. I would say this has come up at least twice. You will see it for this meeting twice. And each time, it's the same retailer. So I would want to have some caution in trying to change the requirements, because if we change it for this one, what about the next one, what about the next one, what about the next one? I think we should keep our focus on just trying to make sure that it fits within the neighborhood scale.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Mabres. Mayor Proto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Revell, kind of in the vein of what Mr. Alvarez was saying, I understand that you don't want to rewrite the ordinance just for these, we might just be having a trickle of requests for CUP. But would it be advantageous at least to maybe make the ordinance just slightly larger that way that it would? Are you saying that if we did that, would then there be another CUPs coming forward just at that line?
I think you could have that the case. That could be the case. That could be the case. Because each retailer has their own specific square-footage size requirements.
So this specific vendor just has an odd size request? So we shouldn't really be worried about the ordinance?
I would not try to cater it toward one vendor.
Got it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Revell. Madam Secretary.
PH 23024. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Patrick Pierfoy on behalf of P&amp;T Enterprises, case number Z23-05, to rezone approximately 6.43 acres out of the Passion for Christ Ministries Edition, Block 1, Lot 1, from B1 Professional Business District to B1 Professional Business District, with a conditional use permit to allow for a daycare as a permitted use. The property is locally addressed as 3100 Little Nolan Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Revell.
Yes, ma'am. This request, as was noted, is to rezone property from B1 to a conditional use permit with B1. The property is located at 3100 Little Nolan Road. The star on the map shows the approximate location. The aerial shows the actual location of the property. If approved, the applicant intends to lease to a daycare on the property. All of the comprehensive plan analysis has been done. It's consistent. The property, I do want to note that, as you can see on the map, there is presence of special flood hazard areas. of special flood hazard areas, as well as wetland inventory resources. Shows picture of the property and what's on it now. Surrounding property to the west. All of the public notification has been accomplished. No written responses received to date. Notification extends, and the alternatives as noted, and staff is recommending approval to allow for this property to be rezoned from B1 to B1 with a conditional use permit to allow the daycare as the permitted use. The Planning and Zoning Commission agreed with staff recommendation, by a vote of eight to zero, to recommend approval to the council when they met on March 20th.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Revel.
Good evening, sir.
I remember the council approving a rezon for this property about, approximately about a year ago. Then at that time, it was from a single family to professional business district.
Yes, sir.
And I believe that was proposed for the relocation or establishment of an actual professional business, the new uses for a conditional use permit. My question to you is, do you believe the presence of a daycare center at this location in a professional business district would contribute or complement the existing zoning designation?
Yes, sir. So, and if I may, when this request initially came to staff, they had initially requested a more intense district of B2. And once we talked with them and understood more clearly what they were attempting to accomplish, we thought that this, you know, that modification of request for B1 with the CUP to allow the daycare makes sense. To answer your question directly, yes, we think that a daycare use is compatible with what is in the area already and how they plan to use the property.
Okay. I guess I'm personally just thinking we could have saved some time if we were more, you know, upfront about what we wanted to do with the zoning.
And I may have to double check this, sir. There may have been, there may have been a change in ownership, but I may have to double check that piece, but that could speak to why there's a change there. But we try to be very, we try to get together as much information as we can for the applicant to understand exactly, you know, what their short-term and their long-term plans are.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Revel. Madam Secretary?
PH 23-025, hold a public hearing and consider a request submitted by Mitchell and Associates, Inc. on behalf of Sandra and Ronnie Skinner, case number Z 23-07, to the rezone, excuse me, to rezone Lot 1, Block 1, Skinner Estate, Phase 2, from A Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The property is locally addressed as 3638 Love Road, Colleen, Texas.
Yes, sir. Council Protem and, to the council and Assistant City Manager, this case is to rezone property from Agriculture District to R1 Single Family that is currently located at 3638 Love Road. The star on the map shows the approximate location. Here is the actual location of the property just off of Love Road. I will note, and I'll make sure I can clear this, there is a passage in utility easement, 30-foot wide easement from Love Road to this property line, so the access is available. Oh, there it is there. Okay. If approved, the applicant intends to develop the single-family home on the property. This zoning, this rezoning is needed because the minimum lot acreage size for agricultural is three acres, and this lot is about an acre. And that's what this is saying here, and in accordance with R1 District, you need something less than the three acres. Comprehensive plan items have been addressed, so I will not belabor that. It is most certainly consistent with the recommendations of the, of the comprehensive plan, which means that we're implementing it, which is very important. That's all I'll say. The view of the subject property looking to the east, behind the trees and the fence line, is in this picture here. This picture depicts here the surrounding property to the north. All of the public notification has been accomplished, zero written responses to date, and you know what that is. And the council has two alternatives as noted, and staff has recommended approval of the applicant's request to rezone the property from Agriculture to R1 Single Family. And Planning Commission on March 20th is decided to, by a vote of eight to zero, to recommend approval of the applicant request as well.
Thank you, Mr. Revel. We have no questions. Madam Secretary, next.
PH 23026, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Franklin Land Associates, LLC on behalf of Whitest Investments, LTD, FLUM number 23-01, to amend the comprehensive plan's future land use map from a public space designation to a residential mix designation being approximately 3.727 acres out of the CT Berlin survey, abstract number 137. The property is located on the east right-of-way of East Tremere Road and north of Andalusia Lane, Colleen, Texas.
So this request is public space to residential mix for a property that's approximately located where the star is depicted on the map. Again, this is really just showing existing future land use of public space, and then the request to go from public space to residential mix, and then the property cordon off or bordered in black is what we're referring to. The public space designation basically is typically for property that's owned by a neighborhood association, the city government, civic buildings, and for natural places like parks and trails. In this particular case, most likely this property was designated as public space because of the existence of the floodplain on the northern portion of the property, and also because of, according to the master plan, there's a proposed future greenway trail through a portion of the subject property. And this map really shows the depiction of the floodplain as it relates to the property, and then the next map actually shows in green the proposed future trail per the park master plan. I want to go back to the map before, and I want to give note to this space here. If you notice, that's high ground, so to speak. It's outside of the floodplain, and it's developable area space. Okay, let me clear that. And that's what this next slide, this next slide is saying. About 1.5 acres is located outside of the floodplain. It's considered to be developable, and we believe that an appropriate neighborhood commercial use makes sense. If approved, the applicant does intend to submit a subsequent rezoning request, and this is that second item I was mentioning, Councilman Alvarez, where they would like to put that general retail store of that 600, 10,640 square feet size. This map here again shows, purple, I guess, is the best way for me to describe it. This is the portion of the property that's in the floodplain and open space. Green represents that developable portion that we talked about, and then that orange tan, whatever that is, seems to represent, represents the 100-foot on court right-of-way. Okay? All of that we're aware of, consistent with the comprehensive plan, drive and implementation, very important. And property most certainly has all of the utilities available for service. Traffic impact analysis is not required, and then existing residential property would benefit from this proposed development. It's also, as we've mentioned, you got the special flood hazard area, but the developer plans or the builder plans to stay, have a use that stays out of that floodplain within that 1.5 acres that we talked about. And then also, as it relates to erosion control, drainage control, there are measures that are being contemplated for that as well. Developer would be responsible for the construction of the future greenway trail, and that would be in the form of a park development agreement. And this is highlighted because actually this, this has changed a little bit since the time we had done this presentation, but this park development agreement will have to be in place and fully executed before any CO is issued associated with the development. This is a view of the subject property looking to the east, view of the surrounding properties to the south, and then all notifications have been accomplished. Notification extent, it's the FLUM, one boundary. And you've got the two alternatives as noted on the slide, and staff is agreeing that this should be approved. It met all of the requirements associated with FLUM amendments. And then Planning Commission heard this case by a vote of six to two, voted to recommend approval of the applicant's request. The two dissenting votes, Commissioner Plakeman stated his belief that the property should remain as is, and Vice Chairman Gukaisen expressed concerns regarding development near the floodplain.
Again, thank you, Mr. Revel. Then we have a couple of questions for you. Councilman Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Mr. Revel, I did originally have some concerns about the preservation of the park area relating to our commissioners, but I see that's resolved where you can still have that park or greenway as well as a general store. I also think the general store at that location would benefit those in the current surrounding area, the fire station which is across the street, reduce some traffic to an extent, and then even those of the future development of the Thousand Oaks subdivision. So, meeting needs on that side. That's all I had. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Mr. Alvarez?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Mr. Revel again. You mentioned this briefly in the slide, and I know some of the P&amp;Z commissioners had reservations.
Yes, sir.
About development happening close to the FEMA 100-year floodplain.
Yes.
So I just wanted to kind of reiterate, and you can confirm or not, this statement that, you know, the burden when developing adjacent to a FEMA floodplain is on the developer and the owner, so they will have to meet all FEMA requirements. They'll have to provide a drainage model to the city proving no rise in that floodplain. And, you know, the best analogy I ever heard for floodplanes was you think of a glass full of water, and that's the floodplain, and if you dump an ice cube in, it's going to overtop, right?
Yes, sir.
So the engineers have to prove that once they put this development in and all this impervious cover, that this glass of water that's already full is not going to overtop. So that's how they prove that there will be no rise in the floodplain. So, you know, if they're willing to go in there and do that and make those improvements at their cost, more power to them. So I do agree with Councilmember Boyd that it would be great to see a general store of this sort in this area, especially with development coming out that way. So, thank you, Mr. Revel.
And what I will say to you is, I totally agree with you. I would say in this case here, they're even going a step further because of the development that they plan, that they're contemplating will take place outside of the floodplain.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Alvarez. Okay, all right. Nothing, Mr. Adams?
They already stated what I was going to say.
You're good? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Revel. City Secretary, go ahead.
PH 23027, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending Colleen Code of Ordinances, Section 31-833, demolition by neglect.
So this, this request here is to amend the demolition by neglect standard. Demolition by neglect refers to the practice of allowing a building to deteriorate to the point that demolition becomes necessary. And I think it's really important to emphasize that when you hear the term demolition by neglect, you think we're talking about tearing down a building. We're actually saying that the building that's being held by a property owner is being kept in such a way that they're not keeping it up, they're not maintaining it, that by default, because they're failing to do those things, it's getting to a state of disrepair, that it would have to be demolished. And so that's what demolition by neglect is really all about, and it's really important to make sure we're clear on that. And the next bullet says that the intent of these provisions is prevent property owners from allowing their historic buildings to deteriorate to the point that can no longer be restored and have to be torn down. Demolition by neglect. Currently, a finding of demolition by neglect, again, means that the owner is not taking care of the property. Some of those examples in the second bullet could be roof leaks, and this comes directly out of the ordinance. And I want to point this out, demolition by neglect, those different conditions are prescribed. They're written specifically in the ordinance. There's no guesswork there. Roof leaks, cracked foundation, broken windows, deteriorated structural members, any disrepair that allows water intrusion into the building are all things that can contribute to demolition by neglect. Currently, as the ordinance reads, it requires the Historic Preservation Board to make a finding of demolition by neglect before code enforcement proceedings can begin. And this will certainly apply to the properties that are in the historical overlay district, 110 or so. If approved, this proposed amendment will allow the Historic Preservation Officer to make the finding of demolition by neglect. Again, it's not rocket science. It's completely prescribed and written in the ordinance in terms of what the conditions are that speak to that. And so this would allow, if this change was done, this would allow basically these kinds of findings to accelerate through the process. That's important because we're really working to try to meet the council's mission of making sure that we are bringing downtown back online and holding people accountable, and every, every day, every week, every month counts. And so this shows you specifically what that change would be. So instead of the board making that call, the Historic Preservation Officer would make that call. By the way, I would say this would not be set in the precedent as it relates to the administration of this ordinance. This ordinance already allows the Historic Preservation Officer to do an order of design compliance. And so, again, we kind of took inspiration from that provision, and said, well, if it allows for that, this makes sense that it could allow for this as well. So the alternatives noted on the slide, staff recommends approval of the ordinance as presented, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this case and voted by a vote of eight to zero to recommend approval to the council, and that occurred on March 20th.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question. So what role would the HPP be playing at this point? We stripped that, that responsibility from them?
So they still have the role of hearing order of compliance issues. They still can hear those issues, especially when it's something of major significance and impact. Even with this, they still could have an opportunity to hear cases. But part of what we're really attempting to do is just give staff the tools that are needed in order to make swift decisions. And keep in mind, the impact of this decision basically is, is that code enforcement can begin. You know, so it's not a life-changing, earth-shattering kind of thing. It just allows code enforcement to begin. And so do we want to continue with the current model that we have, where it takes four to six weeks to get that decision, or do we want a model that can allow that decision to happen in a day?
Yeah, and I appreciate trying to meet our intent with development download. I'm just trying to figure out a way, do we figure out a way to shorten the process? And is this, is the Historic Preservation Board one of our due process boards, or is it, is just something that we have established in terms of the city? Like the Board of Adjustment or any of the other ones?
They do, they do make decisions on the order of design compliance, like Mr. Revel said. That's the main thing that comes before them. This demolition by neglect, as Mr. Revel was saying, it's, this is, this is a violation, basically. If an, if a property owner has allowed their, the property, the condition- If a property owner has allowed the condition of their property to enter into such a condition that is demolished by neglect because of these roof leaks and things of that nature, then code enforcement can take play, code enforcement could issue a citation, and then the owner could be prosecuted in municipal court for class C violation. So that's what we're talking about, is do we have to go to the Heritage Preservation Board to say, okay, we believe that this does meet this condition in the ordinance, so now code enforcement can go address this? Or is the Heritage Preservation Officer going to be able to make this decision and be able to proceed with code enforcement without having to go through the board? So I don't see a due process issue with that. They would have due process in the municipal court if they were cited with that.
Thanks.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor and Mr. Revel. And I like that this helps to expedite the code enforcement process.
Yes, sir.
I don't think it should be a surprise. These buildings don't deteriorate overnight.
Yes.
A lot of these buildings have been this way for decades. So if the owner is getting a notice in the mail from code enforcement, I don't think they're going to be like, oh my, I didn't know that my building was falling apart and creating a nuisance violation in the City of Colleen. So I don't have any concern there. I'm fully confident in, I'm assuming our HBO or Heritage Preservation Officer is Kate? No?
No, sir. Actually, it is Wallace Masher.
Wallace, okay.
And I want to just state, you know, and these are with qualifications. She's got 10 years of experience with historic preservation and the degrees to match it.
Sure. No, so I absolutely appreciate it. And, you know, and the owner is still going to have an opportunity to make things right. You know, when you receive a code enforcement notice in the mail, you know, normally they're going to have a time for you to respond and say, hey, look, okay, this is the, can we come up with a plan? I'm going to fix the building. This is my plan. I'm going to go pull permits. And it's not to say that they're going to go straight to court. You know, there is some opportunity for them even still beyond the Heritage Preservation Board, which is, when I served on it, was mostly a body that made recommendations, aside from the design order of compliance. So, thank you all for thinking of this ordinance amendment. I think it's definitely going to help expedite.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Solis.
Thank you. There were some questions posed to me about who's responsible for making these sort of determinations. And all of my research, and you just cleared that up as well, is that the Historic Preservation Boards are the body that make these determinations. We set the definition of what deterioration is, and it's clear, and it's designed, and it's laid out on that. If this were passed, when would this go into effect? How would that affect people that maybe already are in the situation that we know the buildings are in disrepair? How would that affect those people if this were passed?
So, if this were passed, it would happen immediately? We keep a running list of those that we think are either demolition by neglect or getting there. And so we would just continue to act, we would just move to the next case in list and act under the new model, act under the new provision. I think to date so far, the board has declared four properties as demolition by neglect. I got Kate back there. If she's shaking her head one way or the other, she may. Okay, so it's four so far. But there are more that we need to address, and we believe this will allow us to expedite that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. These are for just our commercial properties, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I originally thought that maybe this was a result, or the recommendation was a result of the board potentially stalling to get to the point of determining demolition, but it sounds like it's for efficiency to get to where we need to be at a faster rate. And then another question I had, which you answered, was what were the qualifications? But you mentioned Mrs. Masher, so I have no concerns there. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Revel. Madam Secretary.
PH 23028, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending ordinance number 22-097 to change the Bell County dedicated tax rate for turrets number two.
Thank you. Mr. Revel.
So if you all will recall on December the 13th, you had passed the Turrets Two ordinance that included everything that's mentioned on this slide here. I won't go into details. In the adoption of that ordinance, there was a tax rate for each entity, but also as the second bullet notes, the tax rate for Bell County was referenced as 0.3626. And that was done inadvertently because it included the road and bridge district tax, which was to be left out. The correct Bell County tax rate is the 0.3160. And basically, what we're asking is to amend that ordinance that you approved back in December 13th with that one change, so that we accurately reflect the tax rate that is to be used to determine the tax increment associated with Bell County for the turrets. The alternatives are noted, and staff has recommended approval of the ordinance as presented. And then this item kind of went through prior to the Turrets Board meeting, but the Turrets Board did meet on the 12th, and they voted by a vote of seven to zero to recommend approval of this change amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Revel. Madam Secretary.
PH 23029, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance readopting the youth curfew.
Thank you. Good evening, Assistant Chief Gilhard. How are you, sir?
Well, ma'am, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Up for consideration, it's actually for a public hearing, is a youth curfew review. As you know, our youth curfew ordinance has a sunset provision. Every three years it must be reviewed, and we're in that third year now. And actually, the current ordinance will sunset in May, next month, May 12th. One of the things, or three of the things we have to do are review the ordinance effects on the community and problems the ordinance was intended to remedy, conduct public hearings on the need to continue the ordinance, and abolish, continue, or modify the ordinance. Failure to act will cause the ordinance to expire. Again, that's next month. Just for background, the curfew hours are generally 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, with the exception of weekends, and also during the summer months when it goes to 12:01 to 6:00 AM. Here's some quick numbers for you. We have KSD enrollment numbers for the past three years, or three years of this review. You'll see a little bit of a dip there. That's a COVID dip. Our population is just shy of 160,000. That's as of February this year. And then you look at the juvenile citations. Again, I'm glad that we're getting out of the times where we have to talk about the COVID effect on our numbers, but you can see it right here in our juvenile citations. In the year 2020, 21, we had a little bit of dip. And then the year 2022, they're coming back to about normal pre-pandemic levels on the juvenile citations. You can see we had about 305 citations. 65 of those were actually curfew violations. That was for the year 2022. Here we have a comparison of juveniles versus adults for arrests. And again, for the year 2020 and 2021, obviously you see the pandemic lockdown effect on those arrests. Not necessarily a bad thing. They were way down. In 2022, they come back up to pre-pandemic levels. Again, we're just about where we were before the pandemic started. Adult arrests did not take as big of a dip, and they have stayed pretty steady all along. But we're looking at about 31% of the juvenile arrests were during those hours of curfew. Juvenile victims, again, the ordinance is to address the victimization and the opportunities for juveniles to commit crimes. Juveniles that are victims during the evening hours or during the curfew hours, again, stayed fairly constant even throughout the pandemic, and we're sitting at roughly 30% each year for the curfew violations, I'm sorry, for juvenile victims during those curfew hours. The alternatives when it comes to reviewing this ordinance, obviously allow the ordinance to expire. You can modify the current ordinance, or we can approve, you can approve it and continue the current ordinance as it stands. Staff recommendations that we continue to approve it, or that the council approve it and continuation of the youth curfew ordinance as it continues to assist law enforcement in preventing delinquency and victimization of our youth.
Thank you, sir. Madam Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hello, Chief, how are you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you, sir?
I'm doing well. Thank you. Just got, I just want to, for the public hearing that we're going to have next week for this.
Yes, sir.
So we can clarify exactly what the effect is on our youth, our minors here in the city. This does not, like for 6 o'clock, I had actually somebody say that their daughter works, they have to be there at 6 o'clock. So if they ever get caught out, can you explain how that works so that they know that that's not necessarily, there's a way to get by that?
There are several exceptions to the ordinance that are written into the ordinance. There's about a dozen, maybe just maybe 10 or 11 exceptions. And those include employment and going to and from employment, school functions, church functions. They can be out with another adult approved by their parent, and there's a myriad of different exceptions. It's quite reasonable, actually. There's plenty of reasons for them to be out after curfew that are acceptable.
Okay. Is there any type of, how does a youth go about proving their legitimacy outside of the hours of curfew or inside?
Each case is an individual case, are looked at independently, and the officers obviously are there to exercise some discretion, and that's part of the investigation, just like an officer would stop someone for a traffic stop. They're going to make some inquiries as to, you have a reason to be going this fast? Is there an emergency? That sort of thing. Same thing with the juvenile. Do you have a reason to be out? You know, why are you here? Are you going to work? Or is it an emergency? You're doing something for your parent? Those are the kind of questions that the officer are going to ask. And again, that's a case-by-case basis.
And do you feel like there's a way that we can, or would it be over encumbering the police officers to have some type of a registration? If you have a son or daughter that is going to be working or is known to be out during these hours for a legitimate reason, is there a way that they can just say, hey, look, this is already on there? As opposed to have to get into a face-to-face confrontation with the police officer explaining what they're doing? You know, I just want to kind of alleviate any type of misinterpretations of what's going on. And if we could somehow get out in front of it before, if my son, who's 17 years old, has a way to say, hey, yeah, I have this, I work at HEB and I need to be there at 6 o'clock, so I'll be out. Whenever he's pulled over, it's not after, it's not retroactive. It's something that he's already been cleared by doing this.
Yeah. Most of the time, the officers are going to try to clear that up with a phone call.
Okay.
Most people have phones these days, and within reason. It would be kind of cumbersome to create and manage some sort of database, and then it would be incumbent on parents to register their children and that. That would be kind of.
And it might just fall off after a while anyway. So I was just wondering, in your expert opinion as a police officer, do you think that that would help you?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry I didn't let you finish there, but the simplest answer is just, you know, to mitigate that on a case-by-case basis, and it's usually a quick phone call.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
PH 23030, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the City of Colleen to adjust revenue and expenditure accounts in multiple funds.
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Drake. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the mid-year budget amendment. So this budget amendment transfers excess fund balance above 22%, appropriates fund balance, addresses estimated revenue and expenses, and identifies required budget amendments for donations and grants and capital projects. So the first item is the budget amendment for the excess fund balance. These are the five respective funds, and this is just the movement of that money, the $8 million for the general fund, excess fund balance that is going to the governmental CIP. $778,000 going for water and sewer, 1.2 million for solid waste, 81,000 for drainage, and then aviation has 1.75 million. And then this is the appropriation of the governmental CIP excess fund balance. These are the projects. And these items, you'll notice, are for design only. Those go hand-in-hand with the CO projects that we talked about earlier that were construction-only. This would fund the design for those, so we could go ahead and get started with the And then these are some different general fund revenue items. So we have fire deployment reimbursement, $629,000, interest income, $443,000. And I won't read all of these to you. So there's a total of 1.4 million that is being increased. And then the expenditures, this shows the transfer out of 8 million. And then we're appropriating 800,000 in fire overtime, a carry forward for stagecoach litigation that was missed on the January carry forward budget amendment. We have the Northwest Tidwell Agreement, outsourcing of the mowing of the fire stations, the city secretary increase, and then claims and damages. Then we have audit expense, separation pay, election expense. This includes the increase of the election workers going from $10 an hour to $20 an hour, plus some additional expense for some election equipment and for onsite maintenance. And then the reorganization for the city manager, city secretary's office. There's some movement there between departments moving in position. And then we have increase for printing costs for the city in-site, for appropriation for police overtime for the STEP grant, which had an offsetting revenue. We have the EMS medical supplies increase due to increase in their supplies. We have a planning plotter and Hill Country Community electricity. So a total increase in the expenditures of 9.5 million, which is a 14.2 million overall increase to the general fund from the original budget. And of that, 61% of that is the transfer to the CIP. And then this is the water and sewer fund, and the majority of that you will see is the transfer to the CIP. And then this includes the WCID generator costs that Mr. Conya talked about earlier. And then we have the audit expense. For the solid waste fund, we have, we're appropriating insurance proceeds and the offsetting claims and damages, and this is for the fire that happened at the transfer station. And then we also have the 1.2 million that we're moving for the solid waste CIP. And then for the drainage fund, we're moving the 81,000 to the CIP. For the aviation fund, we have 1.7 million that we're moving to the CIP. And then carry forward for three POs that were left off the January budget amendment. And then for the governmental CIP, we have the revenue showing where we're bringing in the $8 million from the general fund. And then the AFG grant for the fire engine came in at 132,000 less than we had originally expected, so we have to reduce that. And then we're appropriating interest income for this fund. For the expenditures, be appropriating the projects. And then there's some cleanup for the limited tax notes, appropriating the audit expense, and then some cleanup on the ADA, and then cleanup on the AFG grant. And then the water and sewer CIP, this is the appropriation of the pass-through grant for the DA grant for the WCID generator. This would be the part that would pay for the foreheads portion, and it would be appropriating the money coming in and then the money going out. And then the water and sewer excess fund balance coming in to the water and sewer CIP And then the. And then the water and sewer 2013 bond, this is just the appropriation of interest income to this project. And then the solid waste CIP, this is the appropriation of the revenue for the 1.2 million of excess fund balance coming in. And then we had a price increase for some equipment that was ordered that needed an additional $42,000, and this is the appropriation of that. And then for the drainage, this is the appropriation of the revenue and the aviation for the revenue, and this is just the excess fund balance coming in. And then this is appropriation of the aviation PFC fund for their grants. And then hotel motel tax, they have had record sales for their mixed beverages, and so they need some additional money for the purchase of the cost of goods sold, which will be offset by the revenues that those bring in. So this just appropriates the revenue and the expenses. And then for CDBG funds, this is appropriating the admin, remaining admin expense from FY 22 with the offsetting revenue. And then we had a $3,000 fire donation, and they're wanting to get some mattresses for the fire station. So this appropriates the expense and the offsetting revenue for that donation. And then for our internal service funds, this is just appropriating some, the audit expense and the interest income. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions, because that was a very large budget amendment.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Madam Secretary, items for discussion at workshop.
DS 23041, Colleen Economic Development Corporation update.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you all?
Good evening.
This screen is flashing at me here. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you to give our quarterly report on activities at the EDC. We've been busy, and we're excited to kind of give you a little bit of what we've been doing the last couple of months, and some things we've accomplished, some new faces, and some other things kind of happening, just to give you an idea of how activity has been. I can't stop, can't start without talking about the new staff. As you know, Phyllis Scobie, who's been with us for a very long time, is retired. Robert Watts is our new staff member, comes to us with experience in economic development in chambers of commerce. Got first week on the job, we sent him on the road in March, and we're very excited about having him onboard and being able to kind of keep moving things forward. Phyllis, who is still in the community, will be helping us periodically here and there. She's our expert on some of the buildings. As you know, we have real estate, and so some of that knowledge transferred for a while. So she won't go away completely for a while, but we're excited to have Robert as we move forward. Always like to bring back, make sure that what we've talked about and what you all have taken action on, we give you some updates on this. And in fact, these pictures don't do it justice. This Dongjin SemiCam, you did some incentives for this project. It's a supplier to, of materials to the Samsung chip manufacturing plant that's going on in Taylor, and the Austin plant as well. They are working on really three sites, three facilities on that site. If you remember, it's a three-building complex, really working on all three of them. If you go out there, so this has been said many times before, this was submitted before some recent things. In the last week, there's now steel going up on the, on one of these buildings. And so if you drive out to the industrial park, you'll see a lot of good vertical photos. We posted that on LinkedIn today, the new look of this. So they're moving at a real good pace, planning to still be open in November. So exciting times. A lot of what they do, it's actually a very sophisticated system of which, as you know, pipes and things like that. So the site work took several months because they have a lot of systems underground. And so that's what take a little while to get to the point where we're now going up, going vertical. We wanted to kind of tell you about some action that the board took. We, as you know, the EDC board, EDC owns a number of properties developed out in the Colleen Business Park. Our role is to try to move those into private hands, right, is to get some development that occur. Harrington Industrial Plastics moved into a facility on Roy J. Smith back in November. You can see on the, on the, on the map here, some of their, some really pole barn buildings on their parking lot in the kind of southeast corner of this map. Their offices are just off of this picture. They own the property with, where it says City of Colleen and all the trees. There's a little strip of property there that's remnant that the EDC has owned for quite some time. Not sure what it was used for. It's not a utility easement. May have been planned maybe at one time for a rail to go up that way. But in any event, it's remnant. They have some plans to, long-term, add some, some growth onto that campus, and so came to us about selling that acreage to them. The board agreed to that. We closed in the last, just in the last couple of weeks on that. Part of, obviously, part of our opportunity is to get the property out of our hands and into some folks, and prepare them for being able to get some new development. So stay tuned. We may know more about that development over the course of this year. Wanted to give you a little bit, we still continue to work with MGC Pure Chemicals on their expansion. It's, I'm kind of, you know, telling the story before the announcement, but we've had some information for you. So we want to give you a little bit of steps in the process. We did complete the sale of seven acres that's adjacent to their current property. There's a site that sits between them and the, and Twin Creek Boulevard. That sale was completed in the last quarter. So they now have that. The goal of that particular property was not for the expansion of any facilities, but for them to build a rail line in, something that's been contemplated since they came to begin with, to the community. To utilize rail, you really need a volume, and you need to build that capacity. So this next potential growth for them actually provides the opportunity for them to utilize that rail, which is exciting. Very few users on that corridor, so to have them in that position is key. We still continue to work with them as we finalize some agreements related to looking at our tax abatement and a TERS grant to assist them in the cost for that rail spur. So you'll be seeing those over the course of the next couple of months as those documents come together and things get forward. I would say that the, I don't know whether it's just the cost of materials, or their investment is considerably higher than it was what we anticipated a year ago. So we're excited to see them virtually double in capacity. And so, you know, we continue to look for our goal as we sell property and move property into private hands, the need for new business park development, something we've talked about both individually and publicly over time. So we are working with some folks on the design and agreements that could be for extension of the current business park area. We've, information is critical. So we, as we go along, so we've engaged an engineering firm to help us understand the property, what utilities lines, what the layouts would be, what kind of sites could we be able to work out. We think that's a critical part as we just, before we even jump into any agreements, is to understand what can be done with the property first, at least in general. And so we've started that process. We probably will do that process as we go along with any other properties that we engage. We are actively working with a number of landowners in the market to see about how we might be able to utilize and partner with them in many cases to develop out some new opportunities, various sizes, various uses. So stay tuned. We'll be bringing that to you as those come about. And I would say from very busy early stages, we hosted six companies for site visits in the quarter, which I think is pretty, pretty busy for a first quarter. Usually see a lot of them coming through in the second quarter as the summer starts going, and we've already seen that this month already, a couple of visits. So the activity is high. We are, I like to say, regardless of what you see, in whatever publication you read, the economy in Texas is very strong. The industrial market continues to go at a very strong pace in a variety of different industries. So we are very busy with the product that we have. And in that, we continue to be out there. We want to make sure that we're marketing the community for the kind of industries that are beneficial for what we can be competitive for. We attended the, trade shows are, have changed over time in terms of their limited abilities to be successful in terms of where people are going for visits. But face-to-face is really exciting right now, because we went a few years without having that. So, but going to really maximize the time when we are. We went to Plastic West, and you can see that it really now is a home for five different trade shows, all in one facility in Anaheim. It is, it's so, Medical Device Manufacturing, Westpac, which are packaging operations, Plastech, which is all plastic equipment, manufacturers, products, the design manufacturing, they're all a little bit connected, and robotics, all of which we think we can be competitive for in a variety of ways, and some of which we already do in the market already. So we're excited to be able to partner with these opportunities with Encore Electric Delivery. They have an economic development team in Dallas that help us in a variety of ways when we're working with companies. One of which is hosting industry events, and we're glad to be there. They help us lower the cost of our, having to do this on our own. And then it just, there is a group of, called site selectors, who just help, are consultants who help companies in that location process. It's important for them to know as they go through their analysis for their clients to understand what's happening here. So we're pleased to be able to have Robert attend the Site Selector Guild event that was in San Antonio, just in our backyard. So he hit the road in the first week representing us and being a part of a statewide group that really helped to tell the story about what's happening in Texas. So we're, we want to be in those places where not only what we're telling the story, but also our partners out at the state level are telling the story about our area, too. And that, and I would just say, you can't help but manage your own messaging, constantly messaging. So we've updated some work on our website. It needed a lot of refresh on information. We are, we will continue to look for ways that we can make sure that the kind of information either for certain industries, or the overall data that comes along as it's released, is updated on our website. That's our front door, and we'll make sure we're where we need to be. But, and we'll, we'll see that build out over time as we start to add some things to it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, and welcome. I'm a new team member on KEDC. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Conell, if I could, I would say give you a round of applause, because over the time that we've been here, or the time that I've been here, this is a drastic increase in information of what you all are doing, and more current. And it makes sense of real-time issues that people are asking about, and the fact that people now are specifically talking about EDC and Colleen, as opposed to just what the city council can do to encourage this type of development that you've been able to do just in the short time you've been here.
Thank you.
So you and all the members of the EDC that sit on the EDC board, you guys, I mean, this is, this is 180 degrees different than what we used to, that we, what we're used to. So thank you.
By all means, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Councilmember Bullitt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Conell, you said, "Activity is high."
Yes.
To relate to his sentiments, I mean, things are drastically different. For me, I'd say, you guys are talking about the website. That was, that's a fundamental, and we're working to make sure things are updated. Conversations you guys are having with landowners about potential future business parks and different, various sizes and stuff like that, that's a big deal. And just the traction that we're getting with different companies coming in, to hear the staff is going to different conferences and getting engaged in that manner, this is exciting for the City of Colleen. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bullitt. Councilmember Gonzalez.
So I do echo all of those sentiments. That's wonderful. But I do also want to say thank you, because one of the things I was championing, which is very important, is our community partnerships between you, the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, working collectively along with the EDC to promote our city. This has just been a tremendous turn for us, and I know the best is yet to come. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And they had Councilwoman Gonzalez, thank you. And they had another bit where they had the Innovation Black Chamber was working also with them. So I did, yeah. So any councilmember cigar?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Conell. Always enjoyed the presentation, and I concur with my fellow councilmembers and congratulate you on this great job. But I just wanted to kind of throw a little quick curveball here, because I know recently, the council, you know, we've been talking about our downtown-
Right.
-and trying to get that revived and all that. We were talking about maybe helping businesses down there, maybe some of these old buildings. And I just wanted to throw that out there and see if that's something that maybe the KDC can come up with, some kind of plan to kind of put something. Because I know that, you know, you're doing the right thing, and you're focusing on the big businesses that we want to attract. But, you know, I would like to see if there's something that KDC can do to incentivize, you know, to, whether it's buying these old buildings and, and similar to what we do with the blackboard building-
Right.
-and all that, because I know you guys maintain that, and then you guys lease that out.
Right.
So if there's something that we can come up with, some kind of plan through KDC, maybe not as the big scale, like what you do, but maybe on a smaller scale, and maybe come back to the council, and maybe, you know, we'll be willing to assist you in that, you know, with whatever is required. Because I know that from the conversations that we had a few weeks ago, it seems like the council is kind of adhering to something like that. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We've had some conversation with staff. I want to take some direction from them. They're the experts in some of those things. So we will work closely on ways that we can be, we can leverage the funds and the expertise that the KDC has, for sure.
And I like you, when you work with Development Services, Mr. Rebell and Ms. Kay, that partnership, that relationship. You came in and you jumped right in with the city staff, and just, you're just like a hand in a glove, just moving together.
We rely on them in the process.
Yes, sir.
It is a team approach in this process.
It is a great team, great team. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Well, you touched on it, so I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Cigar said. It's one of those things I talked about before, where the wheels are kind of in motion. We don't really see it yet. But I feel that there's conversations that are happening that hopefully will have some good news that they can actually share with us in the very near future.
Yeah.
But they are moving that direction. They are working on it now, not in the future. They're doing it now. It just hadn't been presented to us, that's all.
And I just say, I very much appreciate y'all's involvement and participation in KDC and the things that we do. And so we appreciate this board very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. And thank you for all you do and your team. Madam Secretary.
DS 23042, discuss errors associated with properties located within the TERS number two that were not marked properly by the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County.
Welcome back, Mr. Drake.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this item, a little background, in March, city staff identified five properties that are located within the TERS number two boundary that were not designated properly for the TERS. The total tax increment not designated to the TERS from the City of Colleen, Bell County, and CTC totals 1.1 million for tax years 2019 to 2022. And this just shows the five individual properties, MGC, Z-Modular, Raytheon, First National, Colleen Car Wash, which they didn't have any property that was actual increment other than a small amount for Colleen Car Wash. And this totaled the 1.1 million. And the actual total value for 2023 for the TERS increment is 40.4 million. So this shows the proposed adjustment to the financial forecast for 2024 would be an increase to an estimated 118 million, which would be an estimated annual revenue of 1.2 million. So what staff and the TERS board are recommending is that city council approve foregoing the 1.2 million in revenue to the TERS from the tax increment, or for the tax increment for 202-
for 2019 to 2022 for the five properties identified, as this would create a hardship on the taxing entities having already accounted for this revenue in their general fund and debt service budgets. Staff does note that the mistake has been corrected by the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County, and that future tax revenue for these properties would go to the TERS for tax year '23 going forward, which would be next fiscal year. And I will tell you that I did scrub 57,000-plus properties myself to ensure that there were no other properties that were missed. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, ma'am, for your hard work and your dedication. Thank you so much. Oh, one question, or two. Councilmember Aberath.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mrs. Drake. I just wanted to reiterate what we discussed this at the TERS meeting, what was that, last week? And out of that 1.1 million plus or minus, the city does have $760,000 of that, but it's in the general fund. So I wanted, you know, the residents to know that it's not that we're foregoing the entire 1.1 million, the city is in possession of $760,000 of those funds, it's just in the general fund and not in the TERS, correct?
Right. It would be in the, it would be in the general fund and the debt service funds proportionately on the tax rate, and the other portions would be Bell County and CTC.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just that because the properties were not identified as TERS, when the tax rates were calculated and when the revenues and budgets were set, then the monies went into the general fund and the debt service instead of the TERS fund, like they should have.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Aberath, for bringing it out. I like that transparency. Thank you for that, sir. Mayor Proton.
No, it's actually the same thing I was going to say, and I just want to reiterate the fact that we're, by not moving that over to TERS, we're not violating any legal obligation to do so. That everything is above board, the money has been collected, it's just in one spot as opposed to another, and to move it from that one spot over to TERS would be, would put us in a hardship on the general fund side of things, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Thank you, ma'am. Madam Secretary.
DS 23015, discuss continuing or dissolving the Crime Solutions Committee.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Proton, the floor is yours, sir.
Councilwoman Gonzalez tried to sneak out, she'll be back. Now, this deals with the Crime Solutions Committee, and I think we're back here, we actually had this on the agenda a couple of weeks ago, but I couldn't make the meeting. But I'll just give you all a quick brief summation of what has occurred in the time that, since we last brought this up before the council. And that is, I think, a renewed vigor as far as people wanting to engage in this process. I think we have a good understanding of everyone that is on the committee, understanding that there's numerous ways to view what we're doing. We did, we were able to get Texas A&amp;M to come in with us. They gave us some really good information, some good advice. Who else was, I think there was another? They were the main ones, right. So with that, that renewed vigor or energy that we have towards what we're trying to do, I think it deserves a second chance. I think it deserves the time to try to get it on the rails and get it working correctly. A lot of things that we talk about here that may not seem that it has anything to do with crime solutions. In fact, one of the issues with the curfew tonight, those are things that are brought up as ideas to say, okay, how can we curb crimes, crime in our city, as opposed to just relying on police to catch a criminal in the act? And so we're trying to get out in front of it, and I think we have a good mode of operation that we're going and, that we're venturing into now. And I would like to see it through to some type of fruition. At least this one issue that we are dealing with right now that we're chewing on, and that is, a lot of it has to do with runaways and victimization of runaways, and what might cause that, and what other types of crimes that that might, that might ensue from that type of activity. So we've reached out to several organizations throughout the community to come up on the radar and say, hey, this is what we can do to help mitigate that particular situation. And so our next meeting will be the fourth Wednesday of this month at four o'clock here at City Hall. I would like to extend an invitation to anybody here in the room, come collectively to, you know, really talk out issues, and be understanding that there's a multitude of different ways to look at a thing. And just because your idea is not the one that is the champion of all ideas, it does not mean that you're not appreciated and that your views are being dis, or being ignored. It just means that the collective body has decided to go a different way, and that's how I hope that these meetings can continue. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm open for questions or any ideas.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Madam Secretary.
DS 23043, discuss pending litigation regarding the marijuana enforcement ordinance, Bell County, Texas versus the City of Colleen.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Meeting Law, BTCA Government Code 55.001, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the 18th day of April 2023 at 7:38 PM. Under the following authority, Section 55.071, consultation with attorney, the city council will receive advice from legal counsel regarding pending litigation, Bell County, Texas versus the City of Colleen. Public discussion of this matter will not be in the best interest of the city. We are now going to close meeting. I'm calling this meeting back to order. It is, it is 8:41. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move, so we adjourn.
Oh, that was Mayor Proton, I need a second. Okay, Adams is first, and you second.
Right.
Okay, all in favor? A motion, a meeting adjourned. Wait a minute.